Good evening, everyone. I wanted to welcome you to the November 24th board meeting. If everyone could please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. So our high school student report, it's not here.
Our high school students may be able to, if they're listening as viewers, which I think they're doing, not as panelists, they would be able to raise their hands and speak.
Brian Koots is ready.
Yep, he's raising his hand.
Okay. Can you take me here? Let me see if I can get this to work.
Please bear with us. We're trying to get Brian into the meeting.
Brian, I think you're set. Brian should be set. Go ahead, Brian. Yes, yes.
I would like to introduce everybody to the new junior representative to the Board of Education, Maria Capasso. Maria, do you want to introduce yourself and start with the updates? Is it possible to also promote her to be spoken?
Can two people be? No, can two people be promoted at once?
I don't believe so.
Brian, I think, Brian, I think we can only literally go Scott. Do you think we can promote two people at once?
Yeah, you should be able to.
Can Maria raise her hand then? I think that's how you promote someone, by raising their hand, maybe?
Okay, I'll try. Here we go. Okay, they're both, both checked.
Hi, does everyone hear me?
Yes.
No.
Thank you, Brian, for the introduction. My name is Maria Capasso, and I'm very excited to be the other student representative. Please don't forget to ask any questions or reach out with any concerns. Let's get started on the updates. As the high school begins making progress to get things back into normal, the teachers have started virtual extra-help sessions after school every Tuesday and Thursday from 2:30 to 3:00. The Spanish club had their first cultural event of the year earlier today. They played a competitive game of Kahoot in what 70 of the club members logged into the computer head-to-head, answering questions about Spanish culture and Spanish spoken languages. Though the winner received a gift card to Dunkin' Donuts, the Spanish club is also setting up a festive virtual pay night for December 16th with the local artists to get a spirit for the holidays. On the topic of language clubs, the Italian club had its first meeting last week discussing possible fundraising ideas to raise money for the oldest Italian-American souvenir shop in New York City currently struggling from the effects of COVID-19. The Italian club will be also selling tote bags and organs for the holidays.
From a taste of the student government, the Eastchester Government Organization, or EJO, recently amended their constitution to move the times and create two new officer positions, those being the Public Relations Officer, who will handle the organization's social media and publicity initiatives, and three video authors, who will create promotional videos for the organization to show in the homeroom a couple times a week and to post on the U of S D Facebook page. Additionally, the November toy drive is going completely virtual as of tomorrow. Since people can no longer bring toys to donate, EJO has set up a donation page that can be found on the high school website under the EJO tab of the activities tab on the website. For anyone watching, please donate to help or enjoy the lives of the children who go to the African Community Center. The Model Congress team is preparing for their first conference of the year. They will attend the Yale competition virtually and are excited to start debating the game. The Student Athletic Council is working on a spirit initiative for the senior athletes who lost their last season at Eastchester. Each senior is going to receive a large poster of themselves with a photo on it, their name, and their sport, which will be hung up all around the gym during their respective seasons.
Knowing Greenhead's first meeting on Friday, on December 11th, they are participating in the EcoLibrio Project on Zoom with other high schools. This project is focused on spreading environmental awareness through student involvement across the country. Future Business Leaders of America, or APLA, has officially started up for the year and recently had their first meeting, a joint meeting with the Maranix APLA team, to help get them excited about the new year and possible virtual competitions coming up in March. The new pre-professional club will be hosting a non-contact chocolate sale in January to respond. Players Club recently had their auditions, and cast lists will be posted for the winter tournament. Rehearsal will be taken place virtually, but the cast is still very optimistic about the prospect of having in-person performances for this year. Staying in the world of performance, jazz clubs started their rehearsals last week and are also hopeful that things will turn around before their weekends of jazz, usually in February.
The academic world, Eastchester Honor Society, have been working full steam ahead since they got the go-ahead to, that they do. The National Honor Society induction is only two weeks away, and officers were recently elected. The Mu Alpha Theta, or Math Life Society, had their virtual induction yesterday, and officers gave their speeches over Zoom to all attendees. The Science Honor Society is beginning student tutoring and will have elections for officers in the coming weeks, and then will decide when their induction ceremony will be. Lastly, the Royal half of Social Studies Honor Society recently elected new officers and are planning to start history tutoring in the new year. In the realm of sports, three members of the varsity girls tennis team went to regionals two weeks ago, and our team's first singles player, Xalma Petri, took along the title as regional champion. The girls varsity soccer team also had their session on the last week and ended the season strong with a close game against the Irish. While sports like basketball, wrestling, cheer, and swim have been postponed to January, hopefully in January, winter job will begin starting in December, and the team is excited to start their outdoor practices. Sorry for all the announcements today. There was a lot to update you on, but thank you for listening, and we hope everyone has a great day to go.
Well, first of all, thank you very much. Welcome, Maria. We're very happy to have you. Brian and Maria, you never need to apologize for any of the updates you give. This was completely wonderful. It's greatly appreciated, and I just have to say I'm so, so, so impressed on how everything is still taking place and you're adapting to the situations and still moving forward so students like yourself and throughout the entire building and the community can still benefit from the many extracurricular activities that are here at Eastchester. So thank you very much. Applause to you and all the students. I love hearing the updates, so never apologize for the amount of time that you're taking because the school is here for the students, so we really, really, really do appreciate that. So thank you very much. It's greatly appreciated. Does any other members have questions or comments for the students? So I just wanted to say happy Thanksgiving to you and everyone else, but especially thank you guys for your dedication. Maria, welcome aboard. Brian, thank you, and you guys have a wonderful Thanksgiving, happy and healthy with your family.
Thank you.
Promise my skills will get better on this one. Oh, wait, there's a no. Okay. Now, do we have any board committee reports? And then I'll meet myself.
Cheryl?
I have a couple reports. The first one is SEPTA had its first meeting of the year last week, Wednesday, and I just want to give a shout out to Jen English, Teresa Baker, the co-presidents of SEPTA, the entire executive board for this first meeting of the year. It's also the annual tradition with SEPTA, and I wanted to make sure that the community knows that it happens. SEPTA gets a lot of staff, teachers, psychologists together to do presentations on supporting students at all different grade levels across the district, and it's a great meeting that, you know, whether or not you have children who receive any kind of special ed services, you get great ideas and tips for working with your children at home, and you can really see what's going on across the district in terms of supporting students across the district at all grade levels. So I actually want to let everyone know who presented and thank all the teachers and staff members and the school psychologists. So Dr. Francisco Bello, the Greenville psychologist, talked about self-monitoring for student self-reflection. Joe Janain, a special ed high school teacher, talked about the transition to hybrid for special ed students. Melissa Scher and Marie Gachalan, who are psychologists at Waverly, I think also at the high school, they talked about a technique they use at Waverly called the wave, which is a mindfulness tool. That's part of the district's DBT program. Michelle Green, who is a special ed teacher at Ann Hutch, talked about the use of Google Slides for choice boards. I loved that one. Brittany Ciotto, a Greenville special ed teacher, talked about the use of Kami, which is a PDF document annotation tool. Lauren Kirkpatrick and Caitlin Anderson, who are middle school special ed teachers, talked about navigating Google Classroom to better support your children at home. Marisa Blazon, who is a special ed and math high school teacher, talked about flipbook notes. And Jen Batista, a math special ed high school teacher, talked about giving instant feedback in math using technology. So take a look every year for that meeting at SEPTA. It's a great meeting for finding out what's happening in the district, and you get great tips on supporting your students at home. Also, yesterday, the Board of Education Community Relations Committee met. I want to thank everyone who showed out. Our topic was public health in the schools with a focus, of course, on COVID and supporting public health across the community and communicating to everyone in the, you know, in town about what's happening with COVID in town and how it's impacting schools. So thank you to the parents who came and spoke about their experiences. Thank you to Claire DeLongshamp, our ETA president, who also spoke on behalf of the teachers about impacts on teaching and the experience of teaching right now. Doctors Robert Glass, Norrie Urso, and Rebecca Collins, who is the medical director in the district, took time out of what has been a very busy series of days to talk about what's happening in the schools. And Caitlin Malone, who is an evac with Eastchester Emergency Medical Services and a nurse, talked about different kinds of outreach that EMS is doing, and I'm sure many of you have seen their Facebook page with posts with outreach to the community. So I want to thank all of them and also thank Grace Noon, our Director of Communications, who was there, who was really helping to brainstorm ways to get this important information out to our school community and to the entire Eastchester community. So I thought it was a great meeting, and I really appreciate everyone's time. Thank you.
Thank you. Cheryl, does anyone else have a committee report?
Well, I'm going to mention that since the last board meeting, there's been a PTA Council meeting, which brought together all the PTAs, and they discussed where they are now and what they're doing throughout the, what they're doing as fundraisers, or what they're doing to support teachers, or what they're doing in their units. And it was a great forum for people to get together and discuss things, both with their school-specific and district-wide. And also, the Hybrid Remote Learning Support Committee also met, and they, I wanted to thank everyone who answered the survey that went out because that information is being used on ways that the district and the teachers and the parents and everyone can support each other during the hybrid remote learning time. So I know that there's a meeting for both of those coming up right after Thanksgiving. They're working very hard to work with the districts. Those committees have met, and some of their members are here, so thank you for joining us this evening, and also thank you for your continued support. Meetings help us see a lot, so thank you. Does anyone else have any more before we move on to the superintendent's report? Okay, so I think I'm going to hand it over to Dr. Glass right now.
Okay, good evening, everybody. I should just mention that the Policy Committee met immediately prior to this meeting, and we started looking at policy that has to do with community use of facilities, which is an important and new policy that, you know, that we will hopefully have for first reading within the next month or so. So the bulk of my report really tonight is going to just focus on, you know, what's been going on with COVID cases in the district and taking a little bit of time to examine, you know, what the future looks like with regard to the state microcluster strategy that affects the school district considerably going forward. So this week, we have a new, we have a new dashboard that's up. If you go on that dashboard, you will see that we've had about 14 cases since Saturday, and we've had, right now, we have about 114 students in quarantine and about 42 staff in quarantine. We had a number of cases over the weekend. We had seven cases Monday morning, and we had four today. So we've had a number of cases. Some of them don't require anyone to quarantine, and some of them, you know, based on the nature of individuals may have had contact with, you know, forced a number of people to quarantine. So it did cause us to have to, we were really unable to staff the high school, so we ended the high school into a fully remote situation through November, December 4th. So, you know, we are seeing cases increasing throughout the county. It is a concern. The county does have several yellow zones and one orange zone, and the question has come up, and I just thought I'd touch on it, what happens if we were to become a yellow zone? If Eastchester were to become a yellow zone, any school within that yellow zone would have to, would have to close or it could stay open by having, conducting testing on 20% of the faculty and staff and students over a two-week period. And the kind of testing that you would do would be, could be the, you know, the antibody testing, which is, can be done on a card and with a simple swab in the nasal area, not in the back of the nasal cavity, but in the nasal area. But, you know, doing that is obviously something schools are not particularly well-equipped to do. It's not in our, it's not in our real house, but the Health Department has indicated that the county of Westchester, Health Department has indicated that perhaps, you know, that they certainly would help us obtain the three kids and, you know, perhaps we could, you know, do that testing. So we're investigating how that gets done, right? So it's an option. It isn't to say that we would do it, but we would have that option, and we need to understand what that would, what that would be all about. So we're trying to get ahead of that, meet all the requirements, figure out how we would secure the tests. The cost isn't necessarily the issue for the test, but what is an issue is the cost of staffing it, how you carry it out, and would people consent to do that, you know, how that all would work. So, you know, my, my sense is that about the time we could end up in a yellow zone situation, if at all, we would probably find ourselves in a situation like right now with increasing cases that make it difficult to open to begin with, right? So, you know, I just want to make you all aware that we're investigating what that testing situation would be like, if we were to get into a yellow zone, so that if we ever find ourselves there, we'll, we'll have a recommendation as to whether we want to go the testing route to try to stay open or not. And, you know, I can't really tell you at this point whether we would or whether we wouldn't. I would certainly be talking with you as board members about that and see what you want to do, talking, you know, with everybody internally and, you know, going for it. But right now, that's what we know. I'm also hearing rumblings, you are seeing schools, I had a number of people ask, well, are we going to, you know, close preemptively between now and December, end of December? The thought at this point is to try to continue to operate, and as long as we can survive the operate, you know, we'd like to continue to do that because even though we're struggling, you know, at any given time, it seems like we have maybe one school that's not open. We have four that are, and we're serving, you know, those students, I think, very, very well. So the last thing I just want to mention is, this season of Thanksgiving, having gone through this, I can't tell you how proudly proud I am of everyone in this district, every single person who has just rallied and pulled together from our teachers who, and our support staff members, who make sure our buildings are clean and our lesson plans are, you know, fresh and digital as they need to be, remote, so that remote learning can happen, so in-person learning can happen. It's, we have a case, everybody pulls together. It's, so many staff were in this building Sunday afternoon when the calls came in, doing the contact tracing so we could, you know, move forward Monday. That's the kind of group we have. They are efficient, they're willing, they're amazingly talented, and they're right on it, so couldn't be prouder. And I just want you to know, you have, this district has got some great people, and as board members, you should be really proud of the folks in this district. I want to thank our community for their patience, and they're, you know, going through this. It's so hard on families, but we're here, we're doing it. We're still, we're still delivering instruction, and our students are still learning. Very pleased about that. We want to keep it going as long as we can. Lastly, I want to thank our community and our faculty for attending two coffee and conversation sessions, one last week with our community and with some of our staff also, and then one yesterday evening, right before the Community Relations Meeting, with just our staff. And it's really important to stay connected, and Zoom has proven to be a pretty good tool for doing that. We've had, you know, a couple hundred people through those two events, and it's been really helpful to stay tuned and in touch. Thank you very much.
Okay.
Those are discussion items later on.
Oh, yeah, okay. Really, I can hear you. Okay, so now we're going to move on to the discussion items, special presentations, and I'm going to hand it back to Dr. Glass.
Okay.
For our PTA recommendation.
Thank you very much. You know, at this time of the year, it's, again, a time to give thanks, and I would like to just take a moment. There's so many groups and people and individuals we could thank, but tonight I want to just take a minute to thank our PTA and our PTA Council, our PTA leaders at our various buildings. We are fortunate to have an active and energetic group of partners in our PTA Council and in our PTA local units at the schools. And I want to just shout out by name the presidents of each school and the, also the, some of the projects that each of them are working on. So at Waverly, co-presidents Anna Messer and Stephen Regidulli have brought these beautiful red benches to Waverly. If you've gone to Waverly lately, you'll see that they created benches for our young ones that can be moved around outside and allow our students to, you know, get fresh air, especially at a time like this where we want our students to be outside as much as possible. An outdoor learning space has really taken shape, and they're used every single day multiple times a day. So we really appreciate that creative, wonderful endeavor there. I would like to thank in Greenville, President Sharon Renzo and her team for the recess bags that they put together for each class to use. Very important at this time. They have different activities and different balls and things in there that students can use. I'd like to thank our leaders at Ann Hutch, co-presidents Roseanne Cosgrove and Jennifer Amadea, for this successful and safe Trump retreat that they put together. The Trump retreat's been a tradition there at Ann Hutch, but this year was done in a socially-distanced way that was very safe and allowed that tradition to continue, so I appreciate that very, very much. At the middle school, President Crystal Jones and her team, we want to thank Crystal, and at the middle school, they donated Chromebooks, which is vitally important at this particular time in our history, so thank you. And at the high school, co-presidents Tina Fernandez and Tori Racine put together a pies for teachers fundraiser, and it was very successful, very heartfelt, and supported our local businesses as well, so we're really delighted about that. And I'm so glad that Dr. Smith took some time to talk about what SEPTA had put together with the showcase. Have to thank Teresa Baker and Jen English for putting that together. I was so impressed by the innovative practices that the teachers are using, and just that small sample was so energizing and invigorating, so very thankful to SEPTA leadership as well. And lastly, but not least, by any stretch, our co-presidents of our PTA Council, Susan Gaines, Angela Schultz, who provide stellar leadership for all the units and really bring everybody together as a collaborative. The committees that they have championed this year have really been essential in moving us forward. You know, of course, the advocacy committee, but one very new committee that we're really excited about, a couple of them I think are really getting traction, the one on social emotional learning, has really benefited our community and brought our community together at this time. And also, as President Delte mentioned, that this, this committee that's coming together to support hybrid and fully remote learning, the survey that went out and all the ideas and support that is going to come from that is really important at this time. You know, it's that kind of ambitious and empowering leadership of our parent community really getting, you know, pulled in tight and partnering with the work that we're trying to accomplish, and it's working so very well. And I also want to thank the PTA Council Vice President, Rachel Crusoe, Treasurer Sarah Alizado, and Secretary Lori DiLaporte for their support as well. And I really look forward to the meetings that we pull together, so thank you all very much. And we just want to let you know that without your support, we wouldn't be able to do the things that we can do. This partnership together is synergistic and allows us to really fulfill our mission. And I think applause would be given.
Thank you very much. Another, we'd be a little remiss not mentioning the Sports Council in that as well. They kind of operate a little bit like a PTA, so we wanted to, the Presidents Mario Delara, so we wanted to thank them and their board as well. They're working on a lot of things. The membership drive is open, and they're still supporting all sports, the ones that are going as well. So thank you very much, Dr. Glass, and thank you, everyone. That really shows how wonderful and how much support that's going on and working together with the administration, teachers, everyone together. So thank you very much for everyone who volunteers their time for us. So next, we're going to have a little bit of discussion about the board meeting broadcast format. I don't know, sometimes we have 40 people in person, and sometimes we have two people or no people in person, and sometimes we have 115 people joining on Zoom, and we're almost in December, and we're not sure if you're hearing us, or how you're hearing us, or how it's coming across. So I'm going to turn it back over to Dr. Glass, just, we're going to start a little bit of a discussion here on that. So as part of our situation here is that if you're going to speak, please raise your hands, we can tell you to unmute so we're not talking over each other here and that we're not muted while we're speaking.
Okay, thanks. So one of the things we've noticed since we tried, we've tried this new arrangement, as you know, the public knows and you know, we used to meet in the library for regular sessions, and then we would meet in the boardroom, which is considerably smaller than the library in this space, and we would do that for study sessions. But under the, and then when the pandemic hit full force, we went fully virtual. We were, the law changed, and we were allowed to do that, and we went fully virtual using Zoom. What we noticed, and what many have noticed at this time, is that by going virtual using Zoom-type meetings, you're able to increase your participation. You're able to be a little bit more available to people who don't have to make a trip to come somewhere, and it was suggested to us, and we had noticed that we seemed to have more people engaged and involved. So when the law looked like it was going to change back so that we didn't, we might no longer have the ability to Zoom, and when school started again, this board was pretty resolute in saying, look, if school is in session, we feel we should be meeting in person. So the way we could do that was to move into this beautiful cafeteria and, you know, be six feet apart and meet in person, but we didn't want to let, let go of the ability to also have people from home be able to participate and offer comments and so forth. So we tried to do both. We had Zoom, and we have, we have an in-person meeting. So sometimes people do attend in person. We have some people attending tonight, people who are attending at home. We've got eight attendees, you know, attending virtually tonight. So what's occurred, though, is that when you have nine board members, plus myself being 10, and four additional cabinet members, you've got at least 14 people here, plus our student representatives, that's 16. What ends up happening is all the microphones end up feeding back and stepping over each other, so people at home are having a hard time. We're having a hard time hearing, we're having a hard time muting and unmuting. You know, Zoom is not designed for all these computers to be in one place, and so that's the problem. We've tried now several board meetings, and we're finding that there's some real problems with what we're doing. So our Technology Director, Bill Plumb, suggested something that I wanted to run by you as an idea, as a straw design, and see if it would work. And of course, we could talk about any, you know, any And of course, we could talk about any, anybody who's listening as a participant, you know, may, may want to comment on this at some point too. So what we have now is a camera over here that Chris and Kevin are operating and that camera is streaming or could stream or does stream live through a link, just like Zoom does. So just now on our board agenda, you post a link to Zoom. What Bill is proposing is that instead of using Zoom, we would meet like this, we would stream through the camera and the link would be posted to the agenda that would allow you to see live what's happening on that camera. And then if we wanted to, what we'd be able to do is keep Zoom going on these Chromebooks that we have, but not publish the public link, right? So the link would be that link, not the Zoom link. But by doing that, we would be able then to use the Zoom link to project on the screen any presentations that we would have, right? So Zoom would sort of mainly be for us. So it's easy to, for us to project if we needed to do a presentation or something. But the audio would be picked up by two or three microphones connected to that camera and we wouldn't have the audio issues that we would typically have. Now, the public comment piece would come in, but we would also publish, along with the link for that camera on the agenda, we would publish an email address specific to the, by which people could email questions live or ahead of time and those comments could, could be read by one or more people of the board would have to, would have to read them. I think it may also be possible, possibly to project them off of that email upon the screen if we wanted people to be able to see them at the same time. I'm not 100% sure about that. I think we can do that too. So this was the proposal to fix the audio and make it a better viewing experience for people at home and still live, still allow the live participation, still allow us to be socially distanced in this room. You know, I don't know how you feel about that. It would be a change that we could talk about. We can continue to do it the way we're doing it, but we're all aware that there, at home it's not coming across too well all the time. There's a lot of echo and feedback and, you know, it's not coming, coming through the way we would like. I think we've gotten better at it, but I think we've gotten as good as, about as good as we're going to get at it. And so this was presented as an alternative and, you know, it's still really important for you all as board members to feel like we're meeting the needs of the community in the way you want to meet them based on what you know that the community looks for. So I thought we should talk about it. And my question to you is, is would you like to try what, you know, Bill has suggested or do you want to talk about doing something else?
Um, Vito, unmute.
I'm all for trying anything, okay? I say we try it. If it doesn't work, we try something else. I mean, we're not going to solve the problem the first time we attack it. It's going to have to be a working process. So just as we've moved to the point we are now, let's give it a shot. If it doesn't work, we'll fix what doesn't work.
Oh, did, I don't know. You know, my blind spot, I don't know.
No, I agree with Vito on this one. I, I was going to say the same thing. You know, it sounds like a reasonable plan. It's hard to imagine exactly how it'll play out until we try it. But I think it's important to continue to, as long as schools are in session, to continue to meet in person, but also to provide, I think we're doing a service that at least some people in the community really seem to appreciate. We have, you know, some good attendance. This is right before Thanksgiving, so this is good attendance, I think, for this meeting and I'm happy to see people being able to tune in. So let's try it. Yeah. I mean, until we try it and ask for the patience of, you know, all of us will have patience. We ask for the patience of the community as well and let us know what you're hearing, what you're not hearing, what's working, and we'll brainstorm through it. So I'm all for it.
I agree also.
All right. Yeah. Unmute yourself if you don't mind.
I just wanted to say too, I also agree and I think more, more than ever, it's, we have to serve the community and doing the best that we can to have everybody involved is our number one priority. So thank you.
Yeah.
So I agree it's worth trying. I do have a question. So for instance, since when you're on Zoom, we know how many people are attending and watching, we will lose that, I assume. So we will really, in essence, I think, have no idea except for maybe somebody come out with a link somehow, there's a way to know. But I don't think you have any live data in terms of how many people, or maybe you do. Do you have, I guess is my question, for how many people are actually watching and viewing?
Yeah. When you televise the meetings, you didn't have that anyway, so it's no different than that.
That's true. That's a good point.
And I know last week or two weeks ago, some people told me that they were watched, they watched afterwards, they were like, oh, I watched the meeting. And I was like, I didn't see your name in the attendees. And they're like, we watched it on a link and that's what we watched it on. And I was like, oh, you watched it on the other link. So people, I think there are a bunch of people who are watching this right now who are not, we can't physically see them either in the chat or in this room, just like they would be if they were at home watching the meeting.
Okay. That's a good point.
Question for our technical guys. Are we still putting this on the TV channel live?
Yes.
Not live.
Not live. So on the TV channel, we're getting it on a loop, in other words, at certain times. So people watch the meetings at their convenience. So, and that's always been the case. So it's, it's no different than that. The only thing I would, I would like to add to what I said earlier is when we change something, let's put out there right up front the caveat that it's not final, that we're trying this and, you know, don't have a thousand people complain, oh, this didn't work, that didn't work. We're trying to make it better, you know? And I think if people know we're trying to work with them, then they'll work with us.
And I'm sure we could ask some people to help us by watching it and maybe sending a test question. I'm sure we can get people to do that. Another thing too, I think just with that, the meeting that we had about 100 people online and 40 to 50 people here, it was very difficult. So like, the people who were here couldn't hear me. If the people here heard me, they couldn't hear me online. So there was a lot of chat going to us saying, we have no idea what's going on, I can't hear you. People here were screaming that they couldn't hear us. They were trying to log in on their phone, that it was feeding back between back and forth. It was very, very difficult. And, you know, if we do have a large group here and a large group online, we ended up not, we ended up almost doing a disservice to most of the people who were watching. And I think that this might be able to help the situation a little bit as well, just from that point of view. We had upwards of 200 people and I don't even know how many people we even reached that night based on some feedback that I received, so.
Yeah, just to add to that, we need good audio and we need, you know, so we can be heard, anyone who's speaking from the community can be heard by anyone who's watching. So I think if this is going to provide an opportunity to get that, let's try it.
Question.
Um.
Yeah, I will. Can we go back to, if we do this here, where we have the microphones on everybody's table the way we did in the other rooms? No?
I hooked up to the studio in the library.
Ah, okay. If we move the meetings back to the library, could we do that? Why do we have to have them in?
We're not far enough apart.
Library's huge. You could sit as far away as you are right now in a library.
And it can allow meetings. So I think what would happen in the library...
It's just a thought.
The issue with that is that the library is already set up where the computers are already pushed forward to fit a classroom where the smartboard is, because they have makeshift classrooms there for the middle school now.
So I guess my question is, could we sit six feet apart in the library?
I'm not sure though.
With the current setup, I don't think so, no.
Ah, there we see.
It's being used for class. It's being used for teaching.
Oh.
Yeah, it's a classroom.
Okay. That I didn't know. Okay. Well, if we sat at a desk in the classroom, what's...
I don't think we...
Just a thought. You know, just a thought. Maybe you guys could look into that as well.
You could, but...
Because then that'll solve the audio problems. That's where I'm coming from.
Yeah, it might, it might be, the audio might work a little better in there. You wouldn't be able to have much of an audience.
All right, well, now, and if we do this...
Well, sometimes.
Yeah, but if we do this for the people at home...
A little audience.
You'd have, there's less need for people to physically...
Well, on some nights, I mean, the kind of the thing that I worry about is on a night where you have a topic that's going to draw a lot of people out, if you're going to allow the public...
At that point, all these restrictions are going to be gone by the time.
I mean, so that's just a thing, you know?
By lips to conscience.
What I kind of worry about is, you know, 30 people want to come and you're in a room and they can't accommodate three extra people, then they come and then they get turned away and then they have to go home and tune in, because there's no way to know. You have to know what your capacity is. And that's what's nice about here is you have room for 30 people, 40 people, 50 people and it's pretty safe that you're not going to run up against the capacity. But, you know, you're right that the audio isn't so great in here. So yeah, it's, maybe that's one of the things we adapt to.
So thank you for that conversation and bringing that up. I think that we're going to, for our next meeting, try that. We'll put out a little information. Vito, I like your idea of coming out a little caveat that we're going to try this and see how it goes. I'm sure we will be able to have some people help us with participating at home and sending us questions and things like that. And I appreciate us trying to work through that. So thank you. And I think we're going to move on to our next item of discussion, which was discussed at the last meeting, which is the food service fund.
So I'm going to toss this one over in a moment to Assistant Superintendent Lisa Semblipo, but as you recall, she had brought to you the issue of food service fund and all the challenges that we're experiencing this year with it. And she had mentioned that we need to keep talking about this and that she would continue to, you know, give you whatever data she has. So Lisa, could you tell us a little bit about where we stand today as opposed to a couple weeks ago?
Sure. So there, there was really not too much of an update. I did get some information from the food service company about the cost of operating at Greenville and Ann Hutch. That cost is approximately $1,200 a month to operate. So their recommendation is that if we are going to continue to offer food service, that we probably do want to consider closing the Ann Hutch and Greenville programs. They're just, you know, the staffing there is just not making up for the, the sales that are being generated. We could still service free students, you know, if we're still operating middle school, high school, food could be brought for the free students to those buildings and that wouldn't add to the cost. So we need to consider that. Their other recommendation is, you know, we've talked about it multiple times, you know, spoken to our consultants, there's just no way that they're going to be able to operate a program at even a break even. The participation from students just isn't there. So we just, we're going to have to make a choice whether this is something we want to continue, knowing that it's going to go into a deficit and then figure out how we're going to cover that deficit, either from the general fund or take a period of several years probably to, to cover it, or if we want to close it down and just stop operating. So like I said, it's not something we need to do tonight, you know, we don't need to make a decision tonight. I think we should give it through the December break, see what happens. You know, the other issue is the high school going remote for a couple of weeks, Greenville going remote for a couple of weeks, that doesn't help our problem at all, right? So, so like I said, I think we should, we should give it a few more weeks, see where we are, see if participation improves at all with the cold weather coming, and then be prepared to make a decision after, you know, January, once we get back. Takahoe, I did speak to the business official there. We have to work out some logistics, but should we decide to completely shutter the program, Takahoe will be able to accommodate our free students for us. We'll, you know, we would just have to work something out with them, but they're willing to do it. So that's, that's an option if, if we decide to go there.
So just a, I guess another question. Is there a way to, since the numbers are down, to consolidate, instead of having both a separate high school and middle school cafeteria, is there a way to consolidate it into one? So for instance, even though the high school is closed...
Options. You know, the, what was said to me was, in order for us to be profitable or even break even, he would have to reduce staff so significantly that the, the food options that would be offered would just further diminish participation and it's just kind of a snowball effect, right? You know, they're going to have to start offering less, less kids are going to participate. So, you know, I, he told, we're right now, I think, selling maybe 1,200 meals a week. He said we need to be up into like the multiple thousands of meals a week in order to break even and we're just not even close. It's not even close.
All right. Question. Lisa, the, I have several questions. One is, you know, they said it's $1,200 a month savings to cut out the elementary schools? That is assuming round numbers 22 days a month. I'm going to round things off and I'm going to say, that's like, how much per day per school? It doesn't seem to me like that's anywhere near the amount of money that could be saved.
That's the net amount, right?
Net, I, yeah, I understand that.
That's minus what we're, so that's the loss we're taking every month by upgrading those programs.
So that's, that's the loss that we're saying, that's not the cost to provide the service.
No, the cost is higher. It's being lost, whatever revenues we are taking.
So if they think that by cutting down the options to a bare minimum amount of food that they can serve, I think there are probably some families in town, they can't make their kids lunch, okay? For whatever reason, they just can't do it. And I think we got to take a serious look at cutting it back to the bare minimum to get as close to break even as possible, but at least providing something that kids can buy at the school, you know what I'm saying? As opposed to completely shutting it down.
Well, I mean, if we, if, you know, if we do partnership, partner with Takahoe, right? We could make meals available to students that way.
If that's only for free lunch use.
Do it for whoever. Not that we service a thousand kids out of Takahoe, but if there are students that want to purchase meals or, you know, being a part of the Takahoe program, it gets kind of complicated. But Takahoe is in a program where they can serve meals for free, not to just free students, it's to any student under the age of 18 in any district. So if we know that we have, that our students who want to get lunch, continue to receive lunch at school, if we know who they are, we can make accommodations to have them.
You know, my opinion is we got to look much closer at that option than, than keep this thing going in a deficit until as long as, you know, possible. We should be looking to have a date somewhere in the very near future and if the December break is the cutoff, then that's got to be the date where we're going to, you know, make a go, no-go decision and see where things are. Because, you know, we can't keep, we can't keep rolling, kicking the can down the road on a deficit and just accumulating money that we're going to have to fund at some point down the road. That doesn't make any sense at all. I would, I would personally, I would shut down the elementary schools as soon as possible and just to save the $1,200 a month, you know? And, and take it from there, but, you know, it's, it's a group decision. We can't keep putting this off. You know, it's, it's here and we got to deal with it.
I just would say, I mean, you know, I, I agree, we don't want to accumulate more debt around this and if there is an option for the elementary school students who, who are either obviously the ones who receive free lunch, but the other ones, students as well, who would like to still continue to have the option to purchase a lunch, we can accommodate them great. I just want to say, you know, to temper the, as soon as possible notion by making sure we're giving a good, it's been a year of a lot of upheaval. We're giving good notice to the families because I, I understand it's a small population in the elementary schools now that are purchasing lunch, but for that population, it's, it might be something that's important for a variety of reasons. So I just want to make sure we're giving them good notice. So if we make a decision, it doesn't go into effect for another few weeks at least so that people have time to get their bearings. that people have time to get their bearings, figure out what their decisions are, what they want to do, if they're going to be accommodated or not with the partnership with Takahoe, what their options are, and give them time to make plans for that. You know, we have families who are asking to shift their schedule around, so.
Again.
Again, yeah.
Aaron, your.
I totally agree that we need to be very conscious of all the families and making sure that they're accommodated. But having said that, the kids are only in school two days a week, so it's not like we're taking five days of lunches away from them. So it's a little, I feel like we have a little bit more leeway and there might be a little bit more flexibility with that and lunches. But my question for Lisa is, if we stop the food service program, is it something that can be resumed, say, the vaccine, the vaccine comes in January, I'm being very optimistic, and we resume school five days a week in January, are we going to be able to start the lunch program back up again?
I don't, I don't think that's going to be an issue. You know, the question is, I don't think we're resuming anything in January. I mean, maybe, maybe May, June, at that point, then we might want to just consider, you know, it's May fifteenth, are we really going to start the food service program now, you know, a couple of weeks ago? So I think the answer is yes, if we need to, we can. I, you know, I, I'm only guessing this, but I'm not really making that's going to happen.
But is it something that you have to rebid if we stopped doing it? Do you have to, I know you have like certain contracts that you have to maintain.
So right now, we are in an emergency contract with Charwell's. That's what we had to enter into this year because they wanted to change the terms of our contract, obviously, because of the, you know, closures. So regardless, we have to rebid for next year. I can check with our attorneys, but I think if we could approach, you know, we could re-enter into a contract with, an emergency contract with Charwell's if we needed to. And I, you know, I think if, before we would terminate with Charwell's, I think we would be under an understanding that, you know, should we want to resume at some point during the year, that they would want to do that, so.
Lisa, I have a question. Sorry, Rob. I've been remote district wide for some period of time. The governor come out now and say, you know, he wants us all remote till mid-January, mid-February, something, you know, we have to make a decision at that point as well, that, you know, what we're just calling it a day for the year, you know, and we'll revisit it next year, you know, is something we may have to consider as well.
Which is part of my question, and I know you went over this, but just so I'm clear one more time. So if we, last year, when we were fully remote from March seventh, eighteenth, sixteenth, thirteenth, whatever, to the end of the year, the people who received the free lunch, still received the free lunch, but it was about fourteen, fifteen, whatever the number it was.
Yes.
If we were to enter into the contract with Takahoe or an agreement, whatever we want to call it with Takahoe, and we go fully remote again, would that open up the opportunity for more people to receive lunch, likely if, because they serve anyone under the age of eighteen?
Potentially, yeah. So, I mean, last year when we closed, we had about seventy eligible students, only fifteen took advantage of it, fifteen, seventeen took advantage of it during the closure. I'm anticipating it would be roughly the same, if we were fully, you know, fully remote, that it would be the same level. Maybe, maybe some more at this point, but I'm not indicating that all seventy students or even, you know, would be seeking lunch, because they would, they would have to physically come to the school to pick it up. So that's an issue too, you know.
So my question was, and I guess you answered it a little bit, which is the coordination portion of this. So if we were to shut down and somebody was to qualify the free lunch and meeting and want to take advantage of it from Takahoe, how is, how, do they know who they're supposed to be coordinating that with, or do we reach out to people, do we know?
Yes, so, so like we did during the closure, I reached out to the eligible students and I tell them to let me know that this is what we're offering, let me know if you want to participate. And then we, you know, we would have a pickup time, a couple of times a week, certain hours, back at the cafeteria, and we would put people back there and with a checklist, and kids would show up, they'd be given their meals, their name would get checked off. You know, we always had a couple of extra just in case someone we weren't expecting showed up, but I would envision we would do it the same way.
Okay.
Regarding the children in particular that would be eligible for free lunches, would their families be contacted multiple times as far as eligibility and that they can get free lunch? Because I would never want somebody to miss out on the opportunity that deserves it.
Um, you know, last time I just reached out, you know, I, I sent them once. You know, there were some follow-up emails, if, if times change or things like that. For the most part, you know, while their contact information was good, I, you know, I hadn't heard from anybody who said, you know, I didn't know what was going on with this. So, you know, I think it's, I, I think it worked last time, so I would anticipate that it would work again.
Does anyone else have anything else? All right, well, thank you. I think that we have, thank you for the information. We did discuss this at the last meeting at great length. And Lisa, thank you for putting the information together, and last time too, with the PowerPoint presentation and such, it was great. So I think we have some stuff to think about over the next few weeks. I do, I mean, just my two cents, I do agree greatly with Cheryl and both with Cheryl, what everyone says, but Cheryl and Tara, I think that, one, if we are going to do something, we need to give an ample amount of time with options. And two, I do think that maybe just double checking that people know about their eligibility and such, because again, we're asking people to pivot several times this year, and this is now, you know, the lunch two days a week might be the thing that's holding them together. So, we're on the edge. So I can totally understand it. You have to, I have one child and multiple children getting ready for school, and it's easier to get them out with school watch. So I know it's very helpful. I know at least when I was younger, not in a pandemic, going to elementary school, my parents, both teachers, they felt that way out several days, so I had to help them together by street. Okay, so next we're going to, I'm going to ask Vito. I know you love to. Item six through.
All right, I'll get them all, don't worry about it.
All right, Vito, I, I hold faith in you.
All right. I make a motion to approve the minutes of our November ninth board meeting. Motion to approve the meetings, the minutes of our November tenth Board of Education meeting. Make a motion to approve personnel agenda per the attached, to approve the Committee on Special Education Recommendations, which the list also was attached. I make a motion that we approve the Treasury report for, I believe it's October.
Yeah, the agenda says November, but the minutes were, I mean, the reports.
Yeah, I looked at the minutes and it said, it said, so which ones are we approving? Let's figure that.
It's October.
The attached is October, so we're approving October. And we approved the tax surtiary settlement for, I read it before, it was approximately twenty-eight thousand dollars with the property next door to the school district, six hundred White House Road. And I believe, what else is it? And we approve, I make a motion, we approve the District Wide Safety Committee, Safety and Health Committee, per the attachment showing the attendees on, or the participants on that committee. And that's it.
You don't want to do the, oh, okay.
That's it. The meetings are, that's the announcement.
All right, Tara, can I have a second? A second. Okay, thank you. Discussion. Going once, going twice. Okay, so, third time. Okay, so all in favor? Anyone oppose? Okay, our future meeting dates are December eighth, January twelfth, twenty twenty-one, January twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-one. Trying not to get too excited for that one on the end of our year here. So, do we have any comments for the public? And we would, we're going to allow, allow or ask that the public that is here to go first, so we are, where do they go? So you're going to come right over here just so we can see you as well. I'm just going to read this briefly because I read it before every public comment. Our Board of Education is here to serve the community and values your partnership in education. We're very happy when community members attend our meetings, and we welcome your comments during the public portion of our meeting. Please bear in mind that public comment is designed for members of the public to address the Board of Education rather than a time for dialogue. To facilitate public comment, the Board asks that comments be limited to three minutes. And basic norms of civility be observed. Please refrain from comments involving individual district personnel or students, as such matters should be addressed with the administration following public comment. Members of the Board or administration may ask clarifying questions as necessary. Please know that public comments are taken to heart. It will be taken or advisement by the administration for any potential action or follow-up communication. For this reason, we ask you to sign in before or after making your comment, so if you wouldn't mind stating your name before you speak, which I'm sure you would. So we're going to have our in-person public comment first, and I'm going to mute myself and hand it over once we get it.
Hi, good evening. Susan Gaines, representing PTA Council. A few things that I wanted to mention, some that's been discussed tonight. The first one is just to kind of reiterate, when we're talking about the student lunches, the importance, I think, of giving parents notice. Because while it is just two days a week, I know a lot of the parents do depend on this, so I think it would be important for us to plan. There could also potentially be an opportunity to partner with the PTA when we're thinking about free lunches. I wonder if those numbers, where only fifteen to seventeen of our students are participating is because they can't get here to pick up the lunch? So I'm wondering if there might be an opportunity there for us to be able to do some kind of delivering of lunches, especially if we're thinking about going, you know, remote in a longer term period of time. So I think that that's something to, to consider. I also just wanted to bring up that, you know, as we do go into the holiday period, we are going to be having a, a PTA Council meeting in December, just to talk about our roles as, as parents and members of the community in keeping our kids safe and schools opened and the importance of that role. And so we'll have some more information coming out shortly about that meeting, but just as we go into our Thanksgiving holidays, everyone, to, to keep that in mind as we do, you know, all continue to advocate for our children, and it is so important. We've seen people come here to our Board of Ed meetings, talking about how important it is to keep our children in schools and the roles that we all play as parents, and, and, you know, making sure we keep our kids healthy at home. Because we're seeing that in the schools, we are able to keep them healthy in the schools, and they're not getting, getting COVID in the schools, but rather in activities at home. So, thank you very much. Thank you for joining us, Susan, I appreciate it.
Hi, I'm Angela Schultz, also representing PTA Council, and I think Susan said a lot of what I also agree with, but I do want to say thank you for the appreciation to the PTA, because we have been working hard, and so have our units, to get through this year, and we're going to need a lot more collaboration, which has been very good this year, and everyone's been working hard. And I do really agree that I enjoy the conversation of making the meetings more available to people. Making the sound better is huge, because so many people are going to be just listening in, so the sound is a really big piece. I wonder if even something such as personal headsets is an option? I don't know if that ever came up, I didn't discuss the library, but just even if you all have your own personal headsets. But that's about it, and thank you very much for involving us.
Thank you, Angela. Thank you to both of our in-person attendees for, one, coming, two, speaking, and your continued support. I am looking at our attendees now, and I normally won't be able to let you in, but if you raise your hand, someone else can let you into the meeting, if you'd like. Someone is raising their hand. Paul Manjoni. Paul, we're going to let you in, and once you're in, which you are, just, even though I just said your name, if you could just repeat your name and you could start speaking, I'll stop.
Sure. This is Paul Manjoni. I just had a question about with winter coming up, what's, what do we do with, with snow days now? With all this technology, do we ever have a snow day, or does, you know, we have, we follow whatever the school, you know, whatever comes up for that specific weather emergency?
Typically, we don't, you know, directly engage, but it's a simple question, so I feel like I can get a simple answer. We, when we put together the, all of the parameters and agreements with our, with our individual units, our ETA, our Teachers Association, that is a question that came up, and at that time, we had decided that we would maintain the same practice with snow days. So if there is, we would consider, we would have snow days as we typically have. And part of the reason for that is, you know, when you have inclement weather, you have safety issues with travel. Our staff come from a great distance, so just because, you know, none of those conditions would necessarily change, or we would just blanket, say, you know, we're going to do away with snow days. So that's, that's where we're looking at it at this point.
Is there anyone else that would like to comment from Zoom? Okay, without seeing any more hands, I'm actually going to turn it over for comments to the board, from the board, not to the board. Rob?
I have a question.
Unmute yourself.
Yeah, hold on a second. Just a question, I was thinking about this this week, because I know this is normally the week that the Players Club has their presentation. What's the deal with that? Is there any status on it, or? Because I haven't heard anything.
Okay, so Brian mentioned in his report that they.
I couldn't hear Brian.
Okay, so Brian mentioned in his report that they did a virtual audition, and that they are going to be posting for the winter comedy, the parts, shortly, and they have high hopes, just like JazzCo, that there could be some type of in-person performance. But something tells me this group is resilient, just like they have been in the past, and I'm sure there'll be.
So they're planning on doing something for the winter, after holidays, maybe?
Yeah, he said that there is just a, just the auditions now for the winter comedy, and that the parts would be posted, he said shortly, actually, so I'm assuming.
But do they have a plan on when it's going to be? Just a question. You know, it's like calendar, you know?
Brian did not mention that, but I'm sure we could.
I'm sure they must.
Yeah, they must have an answer and a drop dead date of when they're going to go virtual or, or if they could go in person.
Okay. Thank you.
So I'm just, as the high school liaison, I'm just going to note that, A, they have a clothing drive going on now in terms of where they're selling merchandise, particularly if you want to do it via class of twenty-one, twenty, I guess twenty-one, right, twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-four, four years at this point. Also, they do have a webinar coming up on December first, so it's by Zoom, in terms of Build Your Toolbox for Successful Virtual Learning. I'll just, do you want to learn how and why hand fidgets, therapy balls, and trampolines can be beneficial to your child's learning from home? So I just wanted to mention that if you're a high school parent and want to participate in either the webinar, webinar, or to obtain merchandise for your child or children in the high school, it is open now, so please buy off. I'm sure the PTA could still use funding, because I know they're still doing a lot for our children. our children. And otherwise, have a happy Thanksgiving.
Cheryl?
It's been a long year, and so I'm feeling a little especially emotional coming up on Thanksgiving, so I just wanted to wish everyone in town a very, very happy Thanksgiving. Please be safe, I, I think it's a difficult one. We had to make the hard decision not to be with any extended family because of special circumstances in, in our family. I'm sure that we're not alone. But I, I just wanna say happy Thanksgiving to everyone, and a huge, huge, huge thank you to all the staff, administrators, teachers, families who have helped us, you know, keep in-person learning going this long. And I'm worried about what's ahead, but I'm optimistic as well, because I think we have a great team, and I'm so, so grateful, really filled, filled with gratitude this Thanksgiving season, and I just wanted to share that with everyone. And thank you, Sally, for, for your professionalism and kindness and generosity during these meetings. I thought it was, you're doing a great job.
Thanks, Cheryl. Thank you, I think we all are doing a great job. So thank you, I think this has not been easy. I don't think when you ran years ago, 'cause everyone here's been on the board for more than just last year, knew that this would be what we were signing up for, so glad we're all in this together. Does anyone, before I say, I wanna say closing remarks, 'cause I'm not a broadcaster, but does anyone else? Tara, Tara, go ahead.
I also wanted to, ditto on the comments, be thankful this Thanksgiving, but most of all, be safe, be wise, wear a mask. And I also, I just wanted to thank so much to the PTA Council, and also the PTA boards and all the members, and so thankful to the educators, because without you, I can't even imagine where our students would be, and just thankful to live in this community. And be safe, everyone, enjoy the holiday.
Well, I don't think I could have said it better myself, of all the comments that were here, and I've talked enough today and for the year. So I'm gonna end it with a thank you, and a happy Thanksgiving, and, motion to adjourn the meeting?
No move.
Okay, second, and so, Jeanette, I think that was Rob and Vito. So thank you very much, everyone, happy Thanksgiving.